And that.
Sure.
Okay, then we shall begin. Welcome to the January 5th, 2022, Los Banos City Council meeting. The city hall council chambers remain closed to the public in accordance with Assembly Bill 361. All members of the city council, city staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and those teleconference locations are required. Following alternatives are available to members of the public who wish to watch the meeting and/or provide comments to the city council before and during the meeting. There's an audio/video broadcast can be accessed in real time from your computer, tablet, or smartphone, on cable Comcast 96, on YouTube, or in the Zoom meeting link, which is available on the city's website, in public meetings and in the agenda there. How to comment during a public meeting? Public comments will be taken at the time of each eligible agenda item. If you are a Zoom video conference participant, to comment by Zoom video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant, to comment by phone, please call on one of the above-listed numbers, which are on the city's webpage. You will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when the public is being, when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. Then press star six to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Important things to remember: all attendees shall be muted upon entry to the meeting. Please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not the item you wish to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you are interested in is called and public speakers are invited to raise their hands, raise yours then at that time, and we will call them in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempting to speak about items other than the item currently under consideration will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about to be called. If there is any disruption to the meeting, the live feed to YouTube and Channel 96 will be paused for a short period of time. Once the disruption is corrected, the live feed will resume and the meeting will continue where it left off. We will now begin with our invocation, and we have here tonight Pastor Sonia Bell. Pastor Bell?
Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you, Lord, for today. I lift up the city of Los Banos and its council members. This meeting, may it be productive, one led by your wisdom and your direction, Lord. May there be unity throughout. I ask that you bless and protect all city officials, police department, fire department, all those in school, council, and all school leadership, teachers and staff. I pray, Father, for the hospital, city hospital, and all its staff that come against sickness and disease, Lord. I just pray for complete unity and direction in our city and other all those that just are in need. I pray for your wisdom. I pray, Lord, that your will be done here tonight in, with each of these members, Lord, and all the decisions that will be made will be led by you. And we just thank you for tonight, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Now, we will call the meeting officially to order at 6:06 PM, and we will ask Police Chief Breezy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Melanie. Oh, you're muted.
Councilmember Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Lamas?
Here.
Ria?
Here. We have a quorum. Now, moving to item four, consideration of approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor Yamas, you're all second there.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call. Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Ria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. We start this evening with proclamations. Oops, I have to get to my scorer here. We have three proclamations this evening. The first is for Fire Captain Edward Viera, a proclamation recognizing his retirement. And so, do we have, is Eddie on? He is not. I will read his proclamation. Proclamation recognizing retirement, see? Los Banos Fire Captain Edward Viera. Whereas Edward Viera became a member of Los Banos Volunteer Fire Department on August 20th, 1990, and whereas Edward Viera was hired as a full-time firefighter by the city of Los Banos on December 20th, 2001, and was promoted through the ranks of fire engineer on July 1st, 2001, and fire captain on October 1st, 2012. And whereas Edward Viera has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Los Banos throughout, through his knowledge and commitment to his job. And whereas Edward Viera will retire from the city of Los Banos as fire captain on December 31st, 2021, with 20 years of service as a full-time city employee. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banos, do hereby commend Edward Viera on his dedication and loyalty to the city of Los Banos and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation was presented to Edward Viera at the city council meeting held on January 5th, 2022. So, congratulations, Eddie, wherever you are. Thank you for your excellent service all these years. Our next proclamation is for the retirement of Fire Engineer Mark Fontella. And Mark is here this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And so, the proclamation recognizing retirement of City of Los Banos Fire Engineer Mark Fontella reads. Whereas Mark Fontella became a member of the Los Banos Volunteer Fire Department on May 5th, 1992, and whereas Mark Fontella was hired as a full-time firefighter with the city of Los Banos on January 16th, 2003, and was promoted to the rank of fire engineer on July 1st, 2006. Whereas Mark Fontella has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Los Banos through his knowledge and commitment to his job. And whereas Mark Fontella will retire from the city of Los Banos as fire engineer on December 31st, 2021, with nearly 19 years of service as a full-time city employee. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banos, we hereby commend Mark Fontella on his dedication and loyalty to the city of Los Banos and congratulate him on his retirement. We proclaim that this proclamation was presented to Mark Fontella at the city council meeting held on January 5th, 2022. Congratulations, Mark. And would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to thank the council. It was an honor and a privilege to serve this city, and I'll miss it, but time has to go on, and I would change it for the world. I thank you guys for all the support, too.
Very well. And you, we'll miss you too, Mark, because we'll see you around.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And I believe, let's see, is Mr. Jones on this evening?
I don't see that he's joined us.
Okay. We will be presenting the actual certificate. I will be presenting it in person at the Martin Luther King Day event, which is this this coming Monday, not this coming Monday, but following, the 17th, which is on Martin Luther King Day, and start here at City Hall and over to the Bethel Church. Here is the proclamation. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia, on January 15th, 1929, and made a lasting impression as a key leader in the American Civil Rights Movement during the 50s and 1950s and 1960s. And whereas during speeches and rallies in our nation's capital and throughout America, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. promoted his dream of a nation where everyone is treated as equal and is judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. Whereas people throughout the world continue to look to Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s example as a model on human relations, and his efforts in the daily struggle for civil human rights have continued since his assassination in 1968 and will continue until his dream of absolute freedom, equality, and justice for all is finally realized. And whereas City of Los Banos is proud to honor and celebrate the life of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banos, hereby recognize Monday, January 17th, 2022, as Martin Luther King Day Junior Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, in the city of Los Banos, and encourage all citizens to celebrate and remember the many accomplishments of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I highly recommend everyone read his writings and his speeches for inspiration. There's much there to be learned. And so, with that, we will move on to item six. Item six is the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to proceed, excuse me, dropped my paper. Detailed guidelines on how to participate, make comments, are listed on pages one and two of this agenda. Comments received prior to the meeting will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the city council meeting. So, at this time, we will check with our city clerk, Ms. Melanie, to see if we have any public form comments.
Is there more comments by email or by mail?
We have none? Okay.
None.
Thank you. Now, do we have anyone in the public wishing to speak in the public forum? I see Sandra Benetti has her hand up. Sandra? You're muted.
Yep, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sandra Benetti with Peninsula Clean Energy. I'm present before you to provide some information to Los Banos residents, specifically those with rooftop solar systems regarding their energy service. So, Peninsula Clean Energy is a public agency that purchases energy from clean sources and passes savings on to customers. Los Banos City Council voted to join Peninsula Clean Energy in 2020, and Peninsula Clean Energy soon will begin servicing Los Banos residents and businesses, actually this coming April is when enrollment starts. The Los Banos customers who have rooftop solar electric systems will automatically enjoy these benefits with Peninsula Clean Energy, including better pricing, closer tracking of energy use, and rolling over credits to the following month. So, I'm actually excited to announce that we've scheduled our first virtual workshop as regarding Peninsula Clean Energy enrollment for Los Banos. It'll be scheduled for Thursday, January 20th, at 6:00 PM. This particular workshop is specific for customers with rooftop solar systems, which we call NEM customers or Net Energy Metering customers. Folks can register for this specific virtual workshop by visiting our website, which is at peninsulacleanenergy.com/los-banos, so L-O-S-dash-banos, and clicking on the link that's listed under workshop. So, this specific workshop, staff will cover how solar billing works, will show samples of PG&E bills for the solar customers, will go over changes to the energy bill when you join Peninsula Clean Energy later this year, as well as Q&amp;A session to answer any questions folks have. I also wanted to mention that Los Banos residents who do not have solar will also automatically benefit in 2022, and will have three general workshops regarding enrollment with Peninsula Clean Energy for all Los Banos residents and businesses, which will be announced soon, so stay tuned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the switch over and afford all the benefits. And we'll be seeing you all, all the PCE folks, again very soon. Meetings and workshops coming up. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
If I have any other commentary in the public forum? Seeing none, I will close the public forum and go on to item seven, the consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And Ms. Melanie, would you please read the consent agenda items?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Rule numbers 230188 through 230510 in the amount of $1,151,118. City Council Resolution Number 6442, adopting a revised budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as it pretends to increase in expenditures in the police department code enforcement, general materials and supplies account in the amount of $20,000. City Council Resolution Number 6443, authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. For those who counsel, we'll see if anyone wants to pull any items for discussion or separate vote. Mr. Jones?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Item B, please.
Item B? Okay, for discussion or separate vote?
For discussion.
Discussion, thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No items, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we will go to Ms. Lewis and Police Chief Breezy for item B. So, Chief Breezy, I'll let you address that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is a request for a budget amendment in the amount of $20,000 in an attempt to help create a space for our local homeless individuals, our individuals experiencing homelessness to... The best way to say is, well, let me go back and start that one over. The goal of this, as you guys know, back in March of 2019, we opened up the COVID encampment behind the Home Depot shopping center in an attempt to keep all of the homeless individuals in one location to help provide and increase services rendered to those individuals during COVID. We learned a lot during that time and during that encampment period, and we'd like to go back to that location in an effort to do the same thing again under version of what we're calling 2.0, where we're taking away some of the things that we learned from the first round of the COVID encampment and applying some better guidance to that effort. And part of that guidance is a privacy fence that will help minimize some of the neighborhood complaints that we received from the surrounding residents while at the same time still providing a safe environment for the individuals that will be able to use that location. What we plan to do is take all of the individuals who are scattered throughout town, requiring all of our different service providers to travel to all those different locations to do outreach in an attempt to get them into housing and encourage them to come to one location where we can focus our outreach efforts with an array of different service providers in our attempts to continue to get people hanged up that they need to get out of suffering from homelessness. The good part about this effort is that, we had a follow-up meeting today, we have approximately six different organizations, and I'll list them off quickly. It's Bethel Community Church, the Salvation Army, New Direction, which is the county-wide outreach provider for those suffering from homelessness, the Merced County Community Action Agency, who is the agency that is running, the vendor who is running the Project Loon Key Complex or Program at the hotel in the 2100 block of Pacheco, Merced County Rescue Mission, who operates and manages our Bridging Homes in Los Banos, our Respite Home, and our Silver Living Home, as well as the County of Merced, and of course, the Police Department and the Code Enforcement Department. We are all going to manage this effort together in a unified voice in an attempt to provide some stability, continue to provide... some stability, continue to provide outreach, continue to provide services, all in an attempt to help those suffering from homelessness. Again, I'm just to restate that $20,000 will be used in this case to erect a privacy fence, which is basically a cyclone fence with privacy slats, the vertical slats, away from the two different housing complexes that are in that area in an attempt to minimize the effects of, or the impacts from the surrounding neighborhoods for this encampment. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question of our city police chief. For the items that would be provided, the dumpster, the portable restrooms, and the handwashing stations, are there other agency monies that are being allocated to help upkeep that, and how often are they going to be serviced?
Yeah, that's a good question. The portable restroom will be serviced by the private vendor, but it is being provided by, funded by New Direction of Merced County, our homeless outreach provider. So they will provide that. We will find a way to get Mid Valley out there with some dumpsters. We'll have to work out some logistical issues with, for both the dumpsters and the portable. One of the impacts that we experienced in version 1.0 was we went through a couple different portable restroom vendors because they ended up getting damaged. So we hope and we're working towards that combined effort of all of these different community organizations of a better impact, a longer-lasting positive impact on those who will be out there this time. Again, and I don't mean to keep repeating this, but it's very important that we do, that we're very cognizant of the issues that were raised from the original COVID encampment, and we're doing everything in our power to prevent those from happening again through this effort.
Thank you for the answers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, if there are no questions, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, Councilmember Brett, or Jones, want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank Brett. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas, I see a hand up. Is that for a second or a comment? I'm sorry, you're muted?
I don't have my mouse today, so I'm a little bit...
Oh, okay.
And I had a question or two for the chief, if I'm not too late, if that's still possible?
That'll be fine, sure.
Sorry, Mr. Jones.
No problem.
Okay.
Hi, councilmember.
Yes, I'm a... This encampment, this enclosure, what would be the configuration of it? How many entry-exit points will it have? How will it be patrolled, inspected? I'm not sure what the term is. Any insight on that?
Yeah, yeah, great questions. Part of that group of organizations will, part of our task will be, we talked about it today, we're going to designate daily outreach efforts, daily patrols of that area, a daily inspection of that area. We're going to have a common message that we're all going to put forth, and it will include things like cleaning, keeping spaces clean, not getting close to the neighboring residences to avoid some of those issues. And the configuration of it, at this point, it's about 200 feet long and 180 feet wide, and we have between two and three openings inside the fence line that are, right now, they're, each of them is approximately 10 feet wide, big, open space. The goal is to provide an area where we can have vehicles come and go from there to assist in cleaning and managing that site. It's a very, you know, we like to think that it's going to be an easy task, but it's not at all. It's going to be very complicated. It's going to require a lot of oversight, and we're going to hope for the best. We're going to do our damnedest to make it the most successful that we can, but we're going in with both eyes, both eyes open. We know that there's going to be potential issues, and we're going to have to deal with them, and we're going to take a combined effort approach and then attempt to address those.
And thank you very much for that.
Thank you, councilmember.
My final question or concern would be, once we establish this, is there, is there going to be legal hurdles in dismantling it, or moving it, or dispersing it, or is this something that's, now that we've created it, we're bound to it?
Yeah, I don't think there are any more than we encumber now by way of having homeless individuals in our community. There might be some problems that we have, but there's, there are no problems that we forecast at the moment that we are not able to successfully manage. You know, you hate it at the end of the day, just like the last encampment, the version 1.0, we went through basically a removal process that required several days' worth of notices, several rounds of written notice, going back, doing more notices. And so we've done it enough times, we think we're comfortable with going in and attempting this, because we need to do something, because we've got them scattered about town now. And I certainly share your concerns or your interest in this, in this concept.
I just, I trust, I trust you. I think I know you well enough to know that you've had these discussions and you're looking into these things, and I know you're not going into this anticipating just a final solution, if you will. So, all right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. So we have a motion on the table. Would someone like to make a second?
Mayor, councilmember Lambert, make the second.
Thank you. I have a motion by councilmember Jones and a second by councilmember Lambert, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Oria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for all the information. The homeless challenge never, will never completely go away, we just have to continue to address it. Next, we have a public hearings, and we have two, no, just one today, two items under the one public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein, thorough written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2014091056, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CECL, for the AMGN Associates LLC industrial annexation and prezone 2013-01, an associated pre-annexation development agreement for proposed project located at the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road, adjacent to the northwestern boundary of the City of Los Banos in Merced County, Assessor's Parcel Number 081111007. In this is included the City Council Resolution Number 6444, approving the subsequent mitigated negative declaration, SCH 2014091056, Associated Mitigation Monitoring Program for the AMGN Associates LLC, and Ordinance Number 1193, which approves the pre-annexation agreement between the City of Los Banos and AMGN Associates LLC for the annexation of approximately 28.5 acres generally located the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 081111007, and this is the AMG Industrial Business Park Annexation. For this item, to whom do we go? I do not have which staff, staff member is taking this item today.
I will take that item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We do have a PowerPoint presentation with this item. Thank you, Sonya.
Forgive me, I, excuse me if I may interrupt, but I do see that, I found the note of the staff member who's taking it. Thank you. All right, go ahead. It was in my notes.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the proposal before you tonight, and I apologize, Sonya, this has animation with it, all these slides do, so if you can click forward. So the proposal before you is for a subsequent initial study, mitigated negative declaration, a mitigation monitoring plan, and a pre-annexation development agreement. Next slide. Background on this particular item, and Sonya, feel free to go through. So November 12, 2014, the Planning Commission recommended approval of an annexation for the AMG industrial annexation. This then subsequently went to the city council on January 7, 2015, where the city council approved the AMD, AMG, excuse me, industrial annexation. And then the project was presented after that to LAFCO, which is the Local Agency Formation Commission of Merced County, and that board reviewed the proposal for annexation and requested a reevaluation of the environmental document. They had discussed that there were inconsistencies with the city's general plan and the tiered environmental document, which required the city then, so next, then the city prepared a subsequent general plan EIR in 2017. And then with the adoption of that focused subsequent general plan EIR, Environmental Impact Report, then we prepared a subsequent initial study and mitigated negative declaration in 2020. Next slide. If you can click for me forward four times, Sonya, this project is located in the southeast corner of Overland and Johnson Road, so it is currently in the unincorporated area. So it is in Merced County, outside of the city limits of the City of Los Banos. The city limits are indicated in red in the aerial, so this parcel is surrounded by the city on three sides. The only side touching the county is on the northern side of this parcel. The parcel is 28 and a half acres. It is south of Ag Residential, which is the part that touches Merced County. On the east, it is located adjacent to Residential to the south, existing industrial, and to the west, industrial, where a heavy industrial operator, Kagomi, is located. Next slide. The environmental assessment, staff prepared a subsequent initial study, and it was determined that this project would not result in any significant effects with appropriate mitigation measures. So then staff prepared a notice of intent for the subsequent mitigated negative declaration, which was posted with the Merced County Clerk on October 18, 2020, for a review period through November 19, 2020. We also posted our notice of intent with the Office of Planning and Research, the State of California State Clearinghouse. With our subsequent mitigated negative declaration, we received five comment letters. The first comment letter was from the Department of Conservation. We received a letter from the Department of Toxic Substance Control, two letters from the Laborers International Union of North America, LIUNA, and one comment letter from Merced County LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. So staff did respond to all of those comments provided to our environmental document, which is attached to the staff report. Those comments are very lengthy, but essentially, staff did provide adequate response, and a lot of those responses are that the project needs to get to development stage. So the next stage would be development proposal after annexation, and the project needs to get to that step to determine what will be developed here, and then appropriate analysis would occur to what impacts are on traffic, how air quality is affected, what sort of, if any mitigation would need to happen for cultural and biological. So additional analysis would need to occur once development is determined and what type of development would occur. The project does need to be annexed into the city in order to facilitate development. Without an annexation to the city, this property is undevelopable. So that first step needs to occur first. I do want to reiterate that back in 2015, the city council approved this annexation for 28 and a half acres, and that approval still stands. The only issue, and the only proposal for you tonight, is to, we're reevaluating the environmental document, so we fixed the environmental document as we tiered it off of a subsequent general plan, environmental impact report, and then we updated the pre-annexation development agreement to our modern standards, which the city council has set thresholds for specific plans, which I'm going to get into further detail. But I do want to reiterate that a lot of the comments were premature at this level of purely annexation. A lot of the comments we received would have been appropriate at a development stage, which those analyses will occur once development is determined for this project site. So mitigation monitoring program is associated with the environmental document. It's attached with that resolution provided for you tonight that would reduce impacts to less than significant. This is the city's general plan. So again, the red line indicates the city's current city limits. The land use, the current land use is industrial, that's what is gray. To the north and to the south, excuse me, to the north and to the east are residential uses. To the north, it's medium-density residential, and to the east, it's low-density residential, and to the south and to the west is industrial. So this project with the annexation would be prezoned for industrial, and then once annexed in would be industrial in accordance with our general plan. Next slide. So economic development, this particular 28 and a half acres is important, and the benefits of development here serve a need for economic development within our community. We've had site selectors come through our community and have identified that what puts Los Banos at a competitive disadvantage is our lack of industrial inventory, our lack of shovel-ready projects, and how important it is for us to be competitive. We need an inventory of ready buildings and sites, which this parcel would help us fulfill that once a development project comes forward, and we need to have appropriate utility infrastructure in place to be able to service industrial-type users. The areas that we're doing well in for economic development attraction are our labor force is ready to work. Those are documented folks. We know that they're here because they commute to the Bay Area, and if we can locate industry here and those folks can work in the city that they live in, we know that we have the workforce here, and the labor force does sustain that. We have the capacity. We also have a streamlined permitting process. We have an excellent planning department that has a very efficient permitting process, and we know that we excel in that area, and we also have the community support for industry. Our community wants to see industry developed, like I said, so that we can get folks off the road and have folks that live here in our community work in our community. Next slide. So the pre-annexation development agreement that's associated with the proposal tonight outlines the requirements for a specific plan for the entire 28 and a half acres, and this is important. And this is important, and it's a piece that we negotiated with, staff negotiated with the property owner to ensure that the project does not get piecemealed out, so that the whole 28 and a half acres is approved for development, and then it can be phased and built over time, but the City Council would approve what the overall project would look like. So, it is not piecemealed, it's done cohesively and coherently, and it's seamlessly developed through time. Prior to any further entitlements, a specific plan would need to be done, so this would prior, be prior to development. The process for that would be similar to a zone change, which would require public hearing process. It would go through the Planning Commission, which they would be a recommending body, and then up to the City Council for final approval. The project would also be required to annex into a community facilities district for public safety, and also annex into a landscape and lighting district to cover costs associated with those areas that need maintenance. Next slide. Public comment, public hearing notice was published in the Las Vegas Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on December 24th, 2021. We did receive one comment letter from the Central California Irrigation District, which I will summarize for the record. This letter was received on January 4th, 2022. It was addressed to our city manager, Mr. Josh Penaro, regarding pre-annexation development agreement for the proposed project located on the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road, APN number 081-110-007. Essentially, just to summarize the comment letter, and we do have this within the project record, is that the Central California Irrigation District would like to note that they have provided, and made the city aware of their concerns regarding this project, as it will create an island within their district if it is not detached from the Central California Irrigation District. And that their previous correspondence hadn't been included in the City Council package. So, they wanted to note that even though they have no objection to the above request to the project, the records indicate that this project is within the CCID's boundary, as well as parcels to the south, and they are requesting that not only this parcel, but the parcels to the south that are adjacent to this project be detached from CCID. And they list those parcels that they are requesting detachment from. They are asking that this information be part of the detachment, so it does not get left behind by the city, as some other projects have in the past. I have previously submitted a copy of our current policy on transfers of rights in district, which they provided a policy from CCID, and they enclosed a copy of previous correspondence, including copies of the Merced County parcel maps and CCID filled maps. And they asked to please remember that the irrigation and drainage ditches that would need to be addressed during this project, and that there would be no interruption of service to the surrounding farmlands, that was their request. And if we had any questions, we could reach out to them, and this was from Maria Fatima Sequera, the assessor from the Central California Irrigation District. So, in response to this comment letter that we received, detachment from CCID will occur through LAFCO. They are the body that has jurisdiction over boundaries as they relate to special districts, special irrigation districts included, as well as local government, so municipalities and counties. So, detachment is supported by staff. I've committed, and with my tenure in planning, as well, I know as Ms. Sequera has dedicated her time to clean up these areas where parcels were annexed into the city but remained within CCID's district, we've both committed that we will clean up those areas as they occur. And so, staff definitely supports that detachment, and we'll be working through that with LAFCO as they are the jurisdiction, the authoritative body which has jurisdiction over those boundaries. Next slide. So, with that, staff is recommending that the City Council would adopt Resolution Number 6444, approving the subsequent mitigated negative declaration, State Clearinghouse number 2014091056. And then, how about the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 1193? It would be to waive the first reading, excuse me, and provide an introduction of ordinance number 1193, approving the pre-annexation development agreement, which is an ordinance. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Before I go to council, just comment to confirm, CCID, the policy is that when a property is annexed to the city, it is no longer within the CCID jurisdiction and no longer part of the CCID system, and that CCID is not opposed to this annexation, and we have received no other opposition to this annexation, no opposition actually, just they want to be sure that this process is done according to the policies. Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll go to council for a comment or question. Mr. Jones?
No questions, just thank you, staff, for your hard work on putting this together. It's been a while since we've done an annexation in the city, and it's nice to see that it's industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
A quick question, Ms. Elms, do you have a, was, one of those, are those parcels that CCID want to be disconnected, were they on that one slide that you had there that you could just point out real fast?
On the aerial would probably be the best way to show.
I just wanted to see how they were adjoining that island, or that island that we're covering.
They're adjacent to the south. So, currently, Commerce Way is a cul-de-sac that is just south of this 28 and a half acres, and it has about nine parcels. Oh, there we go. So, if you can see Commerce Way on the very bottom, you can see part of the wording that says Commerce Way, it has about nine parcels that need to be detached, and as well, just west of that is about 9.9 acres that also needs to be detached from CCID. So, we will take that opportunity.
But they're already in our city limits.
It sure is. It's just a matter of house.
Got you. Okay. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Questions or comments?
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, before we go to a motion, I'm very pleased to see we're annexing for industrial development, creating jobs for our people. I see a hand up, and before I go to council, I have to open a public hearing. And so, I will officially open the public hearing at 6:51, and I see Mr. David Parks with a hand up. Mr. Parks?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My question is, I live right behind this parcel, and I know it's already zoned ag and industrial. I don't understand why they want to become part of the city. Is it to not go just industrial and build homes? I know that's not on the agenda, but that's my concern, because we moved here and we bought this piece of property, and me and my wife work hard, and I just want to know what's going behind us. Like, what's the agenda?
I believe, I believe you can answer that question. Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can answer that question?
Yes, please.
Sure. So, within the county zoning, it is general agriculture, so just agriculture. It has no developable opportunities or properties. Once annexed into the city, it would have to be in accordance with our general plan, which is designated for industrial. So, I'm sure when the home was purchased, you know, a realtor would have relayed that information of adjacent zoning and general plan designation, but the county zoning is agriculture, and the city's general plan designation is industrial. So, annexation to the city, it would have to be in accordance with our general plan and our zoning code, so only industrial-type uses would be allowed once annexed into the city. This would not be allowed for residential uses. And further development would require a very similar public hearing process. So, all of the adjacent property owners would be notified and requested to attend a public hearing where we can present the project and go through a similar process like this for development.
Okay, yeah, so therefore, it's not going to be farmable, it's just you want to go industrial only, no farming in that ground at all, period.
Yes, that is correct. So, agricultural uses are not permitted within the incorporated city limits without a conditional use permit. So, it can be grandfathered until it's ready for development, and then when development occurs, it needs to be in accordance with our general plan, which is industrial.
So, the gentleman that has the contract farming the cotton behind me, how long is his lease for? Because how long has he grandfathered in to farm that ground?
Sure. Well, we do have a representative on the line, which is the property owner. The property owner does lease that, I am aware that they do lease that to a farmer. I believe it's a yearly lease, and this has been an annexation that was approved back in 2015. So, the annexation component of it was already approved, and so the property owner has been working, I'm sure, with their leasing on what would eventually happen with this property once it's annexed into the city.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, and I just don't understand why you want to get rid of farmable ground when there's a big old building sitting right behind me that's not leased out, it's industrial. I just, that's my only concern.
Well, Ms. Elms, if you want to comment any further on that, if not, I can take it and move on with the public hearing.
Absolutely. I can provide clarification. So, one of the slides touched upon it with about economic development and needing shovel-ready projects. So, south of this, we do the electro, electrical, excuse me, electrical distributor's building. That warehouse is actually a fairly small warehouse of 20,000 square feet, but it is privately owned and used as a distribution center. So, it's privately utilized. And there are nine parcels, they're about an acre each, and the leads that we receive, not only from the state of California, but also from our industrial recruiter, they're looking for areas that can facilitate larger buildings, 50,000 square feet. And the 28 and a half acres that would be provided through this project would help accommodate projects the city is not able to compete for, that we get passed up for industry, manufacturing, whatever it be within our community, because we don't have available sites. So, this will help add to our inventory to provide for available sites and jobs within our community.
Mr. Parks, are you still there?
Yes, sir. I'm, sir. Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm just nervous. I'm sorry, this is my first public meeting, and I don't speak in front of people, and I just had some concerns. I'd rather it be farmable ground. I know there's industrial ground around us that's not even being used, and yeah, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parks. And thank you, Ms. Elms, for clarification. I see a hand up. Mrs. Sequera?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for a good explanation, Stacy, and thank you for acknowledging the letters and how much work we've really been putting onto this. Entering one of the remarks, the land to the south of this project that's in the city of Las Vegas, and why CCID is being so persistent on this is because at that time, way before Stacy came in and before I became the assessor at CCID, when the city was bringing in that piece of land into the, into the city limits, CCID had requested for that to be detached from the district, and it didn't get done. So, and from there, then they, because before it was a storage area, it used to be farming land, and actually, there is still a parcel there, it's still farming land. So, that's why we are being so persistent that this needs to be taken care of, that needs to be done. And not only will happen our, in, but if this doesn't get done at this time, and it goes to the LAFCO, LAFCO will automatically ask this to happen, because it's part of the rules and regulations. When it comes to farming, let's say, after this piece of land, the one that the project is being brought up, becomes in the city limits, and it gets detached from CCID, the person that is farming the land, as long as it's not developed, they can continue farming the land and receive what we call Class II water, that is a more expensive water, and it's when and if we have it available. But they can continue to receive water on that piece of land, it just does not have water rights until the time comes that they are able to develop it or do whatever needs to be done. For instance, we're doing that, right? We've been doing that over here on Ortega, Lead and Pioneer, right by Olivera Park. All those homes are coming in. That was detached 15, oh, 16 years ago from CCID, or even longer. They have continued farming that land as Class II. Now, Class II is not guaranteed, but there is the opportunity of still receiving water at a more expensive rate. So, I just want to put that out so that the City Council would also understand how CCID works. And if you have any questions, I'm here to help, and of course, we appreciate all the help from both sides, the city of Las Vegas, and working together to get all this cleaned up. God hope, I really hope you can, Stacy. All right. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time for letting me speak on behalf of this project.
Thank you, Ms. Sequera. Have a good evening. All right, do I see, I don't see any other hands up in the public hearing. Ms. Maloney, do we have any emails in the public hearing?
Let me check in real time, see if I've received any while the discussion was happening.
Okay, thank you.
And I will receive no comments.
Okay, very good. With that, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for two motions, one is going to be for City Council Resolution Number 6444. Do I have a motion for that item?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert McMoRson, for the resolution to approve the Resolution Number 6444 as read.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, a second by Councilmember Jones, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6444 as read. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Now, shall we entertain a motion for ordinance number 1193? Actually, this is to waive the first reading. The way this is done, we have a waiving of the first reading, so we need a motion for that, and then we'll, after that, we'll have a motion for the introduction of the ordinance. So, who might like to make the motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1193?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, sir. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1193 as read by title.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Mr. Mayor, Yamas here, I'll second that. Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, and second by Councilmember Yamas, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1193 as read. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. I'll go back to Councilmember Jones for the introduction.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1193 as read by title.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas, would you like to make the second?
Yes, sir, I'll second that.
Very good. So, I have motion by Councilmember Jones, and a second by Councilmember Yamas. Very good, so I have motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Yamas to introduce ordinance number 1193 as read. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
For Lee.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, staff, for excellent work. Now we can start, this gets all the way through the process. One more opportunity for us to tell the business world, look, we're open here for jobs. And we can bring more jobs for our citizens here in town. Thank you for the hard work, we appreciate it. All right, now we go on to item nine. Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance, that sounds very exciting. And for that, we go to, Assistant Public Works Director, is that our official title, Mr. Vai?
Public Works Operations Manager.
Very good, okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, could we take a quick moment? I see Sonya has her hand up.
Oh, I just see it now, yes, Ms. Williams?
Sorry, I'm pushing buttons over here and that was unintentional, I apologize.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe there was a technical difficulty or something.
Sorry for that, I didn't even notice.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we'll make sure we're careful what buttons we give you access to. Thank you. So very good, so we're moving on to item nine, ordinance number 1194. Mr. Vai?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I do have a presentation to cover SB 1383. Thank you, Sonya. So SB 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years. It requires the state to reduce organic waste, which is food waste, green waste, paper products, et cetera, disposal by 75% by 2025. In other words, the state must reduce organic waste disposal by more than 20 million tons annually by 2025. The law also requires that 20% of currently disposed edible food be recovered for human consumption by 2025. SB 1383 establishes a statewide target and not a jurisdiction organic waste recycling target. Given that it is a statewide target and there are not jurisdiction targets, the regulation requires a more robust approach. This makes the regulation more similar to other environmental quality regulations where regulated entities are required to implement specific actions rather than achieve unique targets. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about organic waste, for the purposes of SB 1383, we're talking about materials such as green waste, wood waste, food waste, and also fibers such as paper and cardboard. Organic waste comprises over half of our waste stream statewide. According to CalRecycle's Waste Characterization Study in 2018, food waste comprised 13% of what we dispose. SB 1383 requires California to recover 20% of currently disposed edible food for human consumption. We currently don't know how much of the food waste stream is donateable. CalRecycle conducted a waste characterization study in 2018, 2019 that took a closer look at our food waste stream. The results of this study will help determine how much edible food waste is landfillled on average throughout the state. Here's what we do know. For every two and a half tons of food rescued, that's the equivalent of taking one car off the road for a year as far as reducing greenhouse gases. Also, recovering one ton of edible food could provide more than 1,600 meals to hungry people. Next slide, please. So SB 1383 establishes an aggressive organic waste reduction targets. It also builds upon the mandatory commercial organics recycling law, which is AB 1826. SB 1383 requires Californians to reduce organic waste disposal by 50% by 2020 and 75% by 2025. These targets use CalRecycle's 2014 Waste Characterization Study measurements when 23 million tons of organic waste were disposed. According to CalRecycle, these disposal reductions will reduce at least 4 million metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions annually by 2030. Additionally, as part of the disposal reduction targets, the legislature directed CalRecycle to increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025. The food recovery goal is unique. Next slide, please. I think you went one too many. There we go. Highlighting here on this slide are the key dates for SB 1383 implementation and milestone. CalRecycle conducted two years of informal hearings with local governments and stakeholders. They then began to, the formal regulation rulemaking in January 18th of 2019, and they collaborated with jurisdictions and other stakeholders over four years to complete the regulations. The Office of Administrative Law approved the regulations on November 3rd, 2020. As you can see, we're right here in the middle, right in the red square, right in the middle of this slide is where we're at today, actually a couple of days ahead of that. The regulations take effect January 1st, 2022, and we must have our program in place on January 1st, 2022. In 2024, jurisdictions will be required to take enforcement action, enforcement against non-compliant entities. To meet the deadline of January 1st, 2022, CalRecycle expects that jurisdictions will be planning and making programmatic and budgetary decisions regarding the requirements in advance of the deadline. And CalRecycle can begin enforcement actions on jurisdictions and other entities starting on January 1st, 2022. Next slide, please. CalRecycle can begin enforcement actions starting January 1st, 2022. And this slide outlines the major programmatic activities for jurisdictions, and the following slides will cover more details. Next slide, please. Jurisdictions will be required to adequately resource these programs, provide mandatory organic waste curbside collection services to all residents and businesses. This means for all organic waste, including green waste, wood waste, food waste, manure, fibers, et cetera. Another requirement is that the containers have prescribed colors, the gray, blue, green that we currently have are CalRecycle-approved colors. There are container labeling and contamination monitoring requirements, which we have met by the new containers that we got with the new contract with Mid Valley Disposal. We also have to establish edible food recovery programs for all Tier 1 and 2 commercial edible food generators. This means ensuring that there are edible food recovery organizations that have enough capacity. And this may entail providing funding to ensure there's adequate capacity and collection services. Another requirement is to conduct education and outreach to all generators. This will require education to be provided to all generators. And when applicable, education may need to be provided in other languages. The city of Los Banas will be required to procure certain levels of compost, renewable gas, used for transportation fuels, electricity, heating applications, or electricity from biomass conversion produced from organic waste. Also, we will need to purchase recycled content paper and paper products. More on this in a little bit. We have to plan and secure access for recycling and edible food recovery capacity. And we will be required to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. Monitoring and education must begin in 2022, which we've already begun. And enforcement actions must start January 1st, 2024. We'll need to adopt an ordinance or a similar enforceable mechanism that is consistent with these regulatory requirements prior to 2022, which is the purpose, excuse me, of this ordinance before you tonight. And they did extend that date to March 1st, so we're still compliant at this point. Next slide, please. The law extends beyond directing waste management and recycling operations and staff. As you can see by this slide, it incorporates all departments within the city to one extent or another. Each department will need to understand how 1383 impacts their work. And public works will be working with the other departments in the city toward this goal. Record-keeping and reporting requirements extend to all of these departments. And jurisdiction leaders will play a vital role in ensuring compliance with SB 1383. City councils and boards of supervisors will need to pass local enforcement ordinances, which we're starting tonight, to require all residents and businesses to subscribe to these services. City managers and chief administrative officers will be involved in capacity planning, directing procurement of recycled organic products like compost and renewable natural gas, recycled content paper, and establishing edible food recovery programs. Financial legal staff will be involved in local enforcement ordinances, new collection fees, and ensuring programs are adequately resourced. Purchasing staff, which we don't have a centralized purchasing department, will be central to procuring recycling organic products and recycled content paper. Procure does not necessarily mean purchase. And through our agreement with Mid Valley Disposal, we will be receiving roughly 500 tons of compost from their composting facility at no charge, per our agreement. Public Works staff are involved with hauler agreements, local waste management processing facilities, and organic waste recycling facilities. Public Parks staff will be involved with assessing the need for compost application to parks and city landscaped areas. And fleet departments could be involved in procuring renewable natural gas for city or county-owned vehicles. Next slide, please. The most basic element of the regulation is that jurisdictions are required to provide a mandatory organic waste curbside collection service to each of their residents and businesses, which we are already doing through our agreement with Mid Valley Disposal. The regulations also require all residents and businesses to use an organic waste recycling service that meets the regulatory requirements. Jurisdictions must have enforceable requirements on its haulers that collect organic waste in the jurisdiction and also for commercial and residential generators and self-hauls. Each business, each resident and business must subscribe to an organic waste collection service that either source separates the waste or transports all unsegregated waste to a facility that recovers 75% of organic contest. We use the three-container system at the top of the slide there. Source-separated system where organic waste is required to be source-separated, paper in the blue, food and yard in the green. No recovery rate standard, since this would basically be 100% recovery. So some jurisdictions dump everything into one can and then they send it off to another place where they sort it out and then they're held to the standard of 75%. They have to recover 75% of that when they sort through it. We separate ours at the curbside, so we're basically doing 100%. The same rules will apply to entities not subject to local control. And CalRecycle will oversee state agencies, UCs, CSUs, community colleges, K-12 schools, and other entities not subject to local oversight. Next slide, please. So SB 1383 requires that we strengthen our existing infrastructure for edible food recovery and distribution. This is one of the areas we will be focusing on during this year. Jurisdictions are responsible to implement edible food recovery programs in their communities, a common theme throughout this presentation. This includes assessing capacity in existing food recovery, establishing food recovery program, and expanding existing infrastructure if necessary, and inspecting commercial generators for compliance and conducting education and outreach. Even in communities where existing infrastructure already exists, there are new record-keeping and inspection tasks that will need to be implemented. We need to assess the following as we move forward. How many commercial edible food generators do we have? How much edible food could they donate? How many food recovery organizations exist? And what is their capacity to receive this available food? What gaps do we have in our current infrastructure and what do we need to do to close them? Also, how can we fund the expansion of edible food recovery organization, such as grants, partnerships, sponsorships, et cetera? What partnerships currently exist and what new partnerships need to be established? CalRecycle has developed some tools to assist jurisdictions with this assessment. And so this is going to be, as I mentioned earlier, this is going to be one of the focuses during this year. Not only educating the residents and the businesses, but public work staff is going to be working on this along with Mid Valley Disposal to reach out to food recovery organizations and things of that nature to work towards the goal of where we need to be at 20%. Next slide, please. So we also must conduct education and outreach to all businesses and residents regarding collection service requirements, contamination standards, self-haul requirements, and overall compliance with 1383. Commercial edible food generators regarding edible food donation requirements, and available edible food recovery organization. The educational material must be linguistically accessible to our non-English-speaking residents. Next slide, please. So this, I mentioned earlier, beginning January 1st, each jurisdiction will have an annual procurement target, which establishes the minimum quantity of recovered organic waste products the jurisdiction is required to procure annually. Ours is just over 3,800 tons annually. And as mentioned earlier, 500 tons will be provided at no cost by Mid Valley Disposal. The procurement target is based on a jurisdiction's population size. There is a portfolio of products jurisdictions can procure to meet their targets, including compost, mulch, biomass-derived electricity, or renewable gas from anaerobic digestion. And that's used for transportation fuel, electricity, or heating applications. Currently, our goal is to procure compost and mulch. The other things are not quite available to us at this time, but that's something we'll look towards in the future. We can also meet our procurement requirements by directly procuring products for use or giveaway, which is what we're going to do with the compost. We can also meet our targets through a direct service provider such as Mid Valley Disposal or another provider, who is required by written contract to procure recovered organic waste products on behalf of the jurisdiction and provide written documentation of such procurement to the jurisdiction. We can also produce or otherwise acquire eligible products and subsequently use or give away those products to meet our procurement target. For example, a jurisdiction could use compost or mulch or host community giveaways, which is our goal. Separate from the procurement target, SB 1383 also requires that jurisdictions procure recycled content paper when it is available at the same price or less than virgin material. These must also meet Federal Trade Commission recyclability guidelines, meaning that what we purchase, we must be able to recycle. This applies to printing and writing papers and paper products. The key here is the cost. If the recycled paper costs substantially more than the virgin paper, then we just need to document that, that we've done that research and we can still keep using the virgin paper. There are record-keeping requirements for both procurement and recovered organic waste products and recycled content paper. Next slide, please. Uh, we'll, we'll also have to adopt an ordinance or other enforceable requirement that requires compliance with CalGreen and water-efficient landscape ordinance requirements, which we already have in place. Uh, that was done three or four years ago. I don't remember exactly the date, uh, but we already meet these requirements. Um, next slide, please. So we have to plan for adequate capacity for recycling organic waste and for edible food recovery. And uh, Mid Valley Disposal currently has um, plenty, plenty of capacity to allow us to um, compost all of our green waste uh, at their location. Um, so that part is covered, the food, uh, the food recovery, again, is what we'll be working on uh, this, this year. Uh, there are requirements for each jurisdiction to consult with specified entities to determine organic waste recycling capacity, such as the local enforcement agency, local task force, owners and operators of facilities, community composting operations, and from citizens such as disadvantaged communities, to discuss the benefits and impacts associated with expansions of, of new facilities. Uh, next slide, please. So this is uh, um, SB thirteen eighty-three in action. Uh, inspection and enforcement requirements. As mentioned multiple times already, by January first, uh, we're required to have in place an enforcement mechanism, which was extended to March first, um, which is this ordinance before you tonight. Um, and we're not required to enforce that ordinance until January first, twenty twenty-four. During that time between uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, January twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-three, uh, we'll need to identify regulated entities in violation and provide educational materials. So to give us a two-year period to educate all the residents and businesses on the requirements of it, so that, that they can be, we can be compliant um, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, with the goal of ensuring every generator has an opportunity to comply before mandatory enforcement comes in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then after twenty twenty-four, we must take progressive enforcement act against organic waste generators that are not in compliance. Next slide, please. Uh, if we're, if we, if a jurisdiction is using a three-bin, a three- or two-bin organic waste collection service, they are required to uh, do annual compliance review of commercial businesses, just as we should be doing now with AV eighteen twenty-six. Um, and commercial businesses that generate two cubic yards or more per week of solid waste, um, that's combined trash, recycling, and organics. And that's a requirement, but with our bundled service with our new, with our new contract uh, with Mid Valley Disposal, it's a bundled service. So everybody who um, who subscribes to collection services, it's all bundled, so they're covered, we're, we're covered for um, the, the three-bin, um, the three-bin system. Next slide, please. We're getting close, I promise you, I promise. Uh, we'll have to maintain all the information in an implementation record. Um, this graphic is a snapshot of items to be kept in the implementation record. There's quite a few things on there. Uh, each section requires a minimum level of record-keeping, such as ordinances, contracts, and franchise agreements. CalRecycle reviews the implementation record as part of a compliance evaluation of our program. The implementation record needs to be stored in one central location. Uh, it can be kept as a physical or electronic record, and it needs to be accessible to CalRecycle staff within ten business days, and it needs to be retained for five years. So the Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority, uh, the RWA, is currently reviewing proposals for new software to assist in record-keeping and reporting for SB thirteen eighty-three. And staff has been assisting in the review process for this software. So it'll, it'll, it will be, uh, all the members of the RWA will have access to this software. We can upload all of the information that needs to be contained in there, and it'll be kept in a central location so that we can meet all of these requirements, uh, whenever CalRecycle needs that information. Uh, next slide, please. CalRecycle will be overseeing and monitoring jurisdictions, state agencies, and facilities, and local education agency compliance. These efforts can include verifying that organic waste generators have service. Um, jurisdictions are providing education, and the notices of violation are issued within the correct timeframe. Um, again, we have all the generators have service uh, per our, our contract. And we, we are providing education and will provide more education. So we're meeting two of those requirements, and the notice of violations will be um, issued um, a little further down the road. Uh, next slide, please. So this is, this slide, it's uh, it's hard to do this. So these are all of the things that need to be done to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. Um, you see right there at the top is in, adopt and enforceable ordinance to mandate organic collection services to all residents. Um, and have compliance with provisions of the California Green Building Standards Code, which we already have, the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, which we already have, uh, the self-haul ordinance, which is contained in uh, and the self-haul application, and the self-haul is part of this ordinance. And then all of the things that are highlighted in green are the things that Mid Valley Disposal is currently helping, helping us with, assisting us with, and uh, per contractual uh, obligations. Um, so they're taking on a big chunk of this as far as the outreach and the um, inspections and monitoring and things like that. And, and they'll keep records of all of those things, and will assist us in providing that to, in this new software that the RWA is uh, in the process of procuring. One of the other things is to grant waivers for organic waste generators in Mid Valley. Uh, disposal helps with the paperwork for the applications for those waivers. Um, but uh, Public Works actually approves those waivers after uh, Mid Valley does all of the labor on those. Uh, next slide. So that concludes this presentation. I do have Alexis Erins, I'm hoping I'm uh, pronouncing that right, from, from CalRecycle uh, here tonight with us, just in case there are any questions that I may not have the answer to um, concerning thirteen eighty-three. And we're available for any questions that you may have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vai. Uh, the question, I think, of both the citizens I hear, so their, their food waste is going to go into the organic bin in the future. And is that starting this year? Is that correct?
Yes, cor- correct.
So food waste into the green container.
Correct, and, and uh, just, just for a little um, uh, what I've been doing, and I've been doing this since July, just because I knew it was coming and I wanted to uh, practice a little bit. So what I do is I have a small paper bag that I put it in, uh, with no, no, just a plain paper bag, and inside a plastic garbage can in, in the kitchen. So we put the food scraps in there, then you can roll the paper, brown paper bag up, and then deposit it in your green can so that you don't get the food all down the sides. Um, and, and during the summertime, uh, when you're mowing your lawn, um, regularly, you can put grass clippings in there, then put food waste, and then put more grass clippings or something like that. It kind of helps, helps keep your, your, your can clean a little bit. That's, that's my own personal experience, what I've been doing.
So you can put a paper bag in the green container?
If it's, if it's just a plain brown paper bag, you can, yes. No, no plastic bags.
No plastic bags, but a brown paper bag. Uh, they're going to get very popular at the grocery stores now. Um, and when I was in Toronto a few years ago, they have a, they all kept a bucket for their organic waste, and they had a completely separate uh, for their food waste. So I guess we should count our blessings. Uh, any comment or question uh, from council? I'll go through council. Uh, Mr. Jones? Uh, no comments or questions here. Thanks. Mr. Lambert?
No comments here.
All right, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that uh, a couple of weeks ago, myself and Councilmember Refugio attended um, uh, the annual um, meeting for our, our great, our garbage company. And they had little um, like buckets that you could sit on top of your sink that you were talking about, where you could put in a paper bag and then dispose of it, how often you need to do so. So uh, Mr. Vai, if you could check with them to find out if those items are sellable to our community, that might help people who might want to invest in one of those buckets to put on their countertops. And that's
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, that question is, are we voting on to implement the entirety of this uh, presentation as an item? Right? Is that correct?
So this, this is just uh, uh, way to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. Uh, and then we'll come back at the next council meeting for the second reading and the adoption.
No questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you for the extensive presentation. It's necessary so people understand. They, they are lengthy, but necessary, so part of our job. Uh, so with that, um, Chair will entertain a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number one-one-nine-four.
Mayor, Councilmember Jones. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number one-one-nine-four as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, a second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Lambert to waive the first reading of ordinance number one-one-nine-four as read. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
No.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried four to one. Mr. Yamas dissenting. Now we will uh, entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number one-one-nine-four. Do I have a motion? Oh, Mr. Jones, I think you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Sure. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number one-one-nine-four as read by title.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, a second.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Lambert, to introduce ordinance number one-one-nine-four. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
No.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried uh, four to one. Mr. Yamas dissenting. Thank you very much. We will close item nine, and we will move to item ten. Acceptance of grant deeds from the Los Banas Designated Local Authority, DLA, as successor agency to the former Los Banas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, to the city of Los Banas. And for this, we go to City Attorney, Mr. Ma.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I do not have a PowerPoint, and I will try to be brief. Um, the item before you is uh, an, in a series of uh, in the same vein as the other items that you've accepted, the DLA properties uh, to the city. And prior to tonight, you've already accepted eight of those DLA properties. Um, tonight is more of the same. And we're dealing with, in this first item, number ten A and B, we're dealing with three rail trail properties. They are generally start at the future Tenth Street uh, right away, and they stretch all the way to Mercy Springs Road. The, there's maps in your uh, staff reports that show those parcels. They're skinny parcels that basically mirror the, the walking trail from that point A to Mercy Springs Road. Um, and it's three different parcels. I think the biggest parcel is two-point-two acres, uh, and the smallest one is point-six-eight. Um, like I said, a map of each of the three parcels are in your staff report. Um, these are obviously governmental use parcels, uh, as there is a walking trail, and we're accepting them to continue on uh, maintaining that walking trail. Um, in November of this year, excuse me, in November of last year, we obtained a condition of title guarantee from TransCounty Title Company. I've examined that title guarantee, and there are no exceptions to the title, uh, which should cause major concerns to you in terms of accepting the grant deeds for these three, three, three properties. Um, the one property, the one closest to the Tenth Street extension, uh, is subject to a land use covenant due to the presence of arsenic. And as you recall from my prior presentations, the land use covenant uh, prohibits residential development on that parcel if, if even the city would want to consider that. The other two parcels, the parcels closer to Mercy Springs Road, uh, were not impacted to the extent with arsenic that required a cleanup. And so there is no land use covenant on those two parcels. Um, so with that, I think it's pretty straightforward that the city would like to have these parcels as part of its rail trail uh, network. And you have resolutions six-four-four-five and six-four-four-six um, that do that. So I'm here to answer any questions um, that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Once again, nice to get these properties back in, in the city's hands. Uh, we'll through council for question and comment. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Vaughn, on these parcels here, uh, we do have restrictions on what we can use them for. They have to stay parklight settings, or the rail trail has to stay there for those
Well, they're for governmental use, and if we use them for anything other than governmental use, uh, we have to uh, share the proceeds of that with the other taxing entities. So if you wanted to use them for something other than the rail trail, uh, we'd have to be careful to make sure that we're using them for a governmental purpose. Otherwise, we get into that future development compensation agreement that we have to share the compensation with uh, with the other taxing entities. But an answer to your, short answer to your question is, if you did not want to maintain the public walking trail in those locations, there's nothing that would prohibit you from changing that to some other governmental use.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
No questions. Questions were answered.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Yamas?
Yes, sir. No questions. Thank you.
All right, very good. So uh, no, no questions for me. Uh, once again, very good to see this happening. Uh, I'll move down to these resolutions. And the first one is City Council Resolution number six-four-four-five, accepting grant deed from the Los Banas DLA as successor agency to the former Los Banas RDA to the city of Los Banas, point-six acre parcel located between Mercy Springs Road and the future Tenth Street Extension, currently zone rail corridor RC, assessor's parcel number zero-two-six, one-four-one-zero-zero-two, partially developed with a public walking trail. Chair will entertain a motion. Would anyone like to move to approve City Council Resolution six-four-four-five? Going once?
Don't be shy, please.
Um, Councilmember Jones is putting his hand up. He might have
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jones. Technological stuff?
Let me see if I can unmute you. Here. Did that help?
Still there.
Yes, I was, I was locked out from speaking.
Oh, I didn't do it. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
All right, so yes, I'd like to uh, make motion to, let's see, adopt City Council Resolution six-four-four-five as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert? I have a second from Mr. Lambert. He's, he, he can't
He's locked out, too.
So So someone wanted to shut the council up today.
What's going on? Because I'm not pressing any buttons. I don't know why you guys are getting.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a, maybe there's a lag in the, sometime there's a lag in the technology, especially with Zoom. We deal with it all the time. So I have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Lambert to approve City Council, adopt, uh, City Council Resolution number six four four five. Ms. Melanie, roll call. Okay. Will you use a thumbs up?
There we go. I I don't know what's going on. It says the host has us muted, and it locks us out. It's like defaulting to mute us.
Well, I know that, um, I'm a co-host, Sonya's a co-host, and so is Mr. Vaughn.
I'm, I'm, I don't think I'm a host.
Yeah, I need to.
You're, you're a host, too, Bill.
Yeah, just in case Sonya and I got disconnected like I did last time, I didn't want the meeting to go dark. So I don't know if maybe that's what it is. I'm not sure. Sonya, do you see anything on your end?
But it's kind of funny, because I just tried to unmute myself, and I got the same message.
I was able to unmute.
I don't see anything, but I'll keep on looking.
There's a glitch on one of the, it should be off now. Okay. All right. So let's run the roll call, uh, one more time, Ms. Melanie.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Now, Chair, entertain a motion, uh, for a City Council Resolution number six four four six. Let's read this first. Accepting the grant deed from the Los Banos DLA as successor agency to the former Los Banos RDA to the city of Los Banos, one point three acre parcel located between Mercy Springs Road and the future Tenth Street Extension, currently zoned rail corridor, APN zero two six one seven one zero one one, partially developed with a public walking trail and two point zero acre parcel located between Mercy Springs Road and the future Tenth Street Extension, currently zoned rail corridor, assessors parcel number zero two six one six one zero zero one. And so Chair will entertain a motion for six four four six.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert.
Okay, then Mr. Lambert first.
I'll make the resolution to accept the resolution number six four four six as read.
Thank you. Second? Mr. Mayor Yamas, Chair, second that. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, second by Councilmember Yamas, to approve City Council Resolution number six four four six as read. Ms. Melanie, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for the presentation.
Thank you, Council.
Before, before moving to item eleven, we will, uh, give Councilmember Lambert opportunity to excuse himself from the discussion. I'll let him, uh, explain his.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have been advised by the City Attorney that since my place of business is within five hundred feet of this property, I cannot participate in this item, and I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. We'll give him a moment to log off.
Okay, I guess we can start.
Um, this is the fourth of the three parcels.
After you accept this one tonight, you'll have accepted twelve parcels, and I believe there's like four left to come before you. I just got the title guarantees on those, I believe, and yesterday's email, so you might expect to see those at the next council meeting or the council meeting after that. Uh, this parcel is again a rail trail parcel. The map is in your staff report. This is a larger parcel. It's actually five point six acres, and it starts, uh, across the street from the community center, and it stretches all the way to the future Tenth Street Extension. So the, these four parcel, parcels complete the rail trail from the, um, uh, community center all the way to Mercy Springs Road. As of the other parcels, in November of two thousand twenty-one, I obtained a title, condition of title guarantee from Trans County Title. I've reviewed that title guarantee, and there are no exceptions to the title, which would be major concerns to you in accepting these, uh, grant deed, or accepting this grant deed. This one, though, is subject to a land use covenant, as there were, uh, there was arsenic presence on the property, which has been cleaned up to a level which will allow, uh, commercial development and recreational development. Like the other parcels, this is a governmental use property, uh, to be used for the rail trail or other governmental uses. Any, any use that generates income, uh, will then have to be split with the other, uh, taxing entities. And so there you go. This, this is, this completes the, I believe, all of the parcels on the trail. Um, so we're suggesting and recommending that you adopt Resolution sixty four forty seven. You're welcome to ask me any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Go through council. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Mr. Lambert is here. Uh, Ms. Lewis?
No questions.
And Mr. Yamas.
No questions for you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So Chair will entertain a motion to adopt City Council Resolution number six four four seven, accepting the grant deed from Los Banos DLA as successor agency to the former Los Banos RDA to the city of Los Banos, five point three, six three acre parcel located between Seventh Street and the future Tenth Street Extension, currently zoned rail corridor, RC, assessors parcel number zero two five one one four zero one zero, developed with a walking trail. Uh, motion?
Mayor, Councilmember.
I've got Mr. Jones first, and.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, to adopt City Council Resolution six four four seven as submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
I second that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, a second by Councilmember Yamas, to approve City Council Resolution number six four four seven as read. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now, uh, ask Mr. Lambert to rejoin us, uh, before we go to advisement of public There he is. All right. So we will now go to advisement of public notices, and I show no report. Next, we go to the City Manager's Report. City Manager, Mr. Pino.
Hello, Mayor Faria, Council. Happy New Year. We made it on over the other side, so, uh, happy to all be here, happy New Year to everybody else out there. Um, wanted to just give a big thank you to, uh, Mark Fontella and any of you for their service, um, everything that they've done for us throughout the years, and all the hard work of keeping us safe in the community, so thank you to them for that. Uh, another important thing that I'd really like to highlight here for the city of Los Banos, uh, and and give a lot of big recognition to the, uh, local police department is, uh, the city of Los Banos, uh, in two thousand twenty, we had, uh, an unfortunate increase in homicides. Uh, and in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, we had twenty, uh, in two thousand twenty, we had nine homicides. In two thousand and twenty-one, um, the police department did an excellent job and working very hard and being very proactive, uh, and they were able to reduce our homicide count in the city of Los Banos all the way down to two. Uh, that is about a seventy-eight percent decrease. Uh, I, and, uh, they also were able to reduce our shootings by over fifty percent in the city of Los Banos, and, um, it's still two too many homicides, but, um, I just, I want to give a big thank you to, um, Chief Breezy for his leadership, um, and and really to, you know, leading the department on that, and to every single folks at work, um, part of our law enforcement, um, department, thank you so much to them for the hard work. Um, as a citizen of Los Banos, knowing that, you know, we're a community out there that's, you know, making sure that we're, we're safe, and if you you read the news at all, uh, what's even more, uh, uh, enlightening about that number and that statistic is, throughout the rest of the country and throughout national statistics, um, actually, those numbers are increasing, um, throughout a lot of cities throughout the country and nationally, and we've had a significant reduction, um, in those numbers. So I'm just really happy and proud, um, of our local law enforcement team for having such a tremendous reduction and tackling that head on. So a big thank you to them, and I really just want to applaud them for all their hard work, uh, not only as a city manager, but also as a citizen, uh, of this city. So thank you, folks, so much, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pino. We echo all the positives you share. Now we move to item fourteen, which is my report. Merced County Association of Governments, couple of highlights on the year. Uh, it expanded their service over the last year in the bus, uh, including more microbus transit for the west side, have an MC Bus For Me program for Merced College students, and MCAG coordination with Caltrans, been moving forward with the synchronization of the signal lights on Pacheco, smooth our traffic there, and continue the development of the Pioneer Corridor with the Measure V funds. Uh, Measure V, twenty twenty-one year in review, in the, since its inception, uh, countywide has generated more than ninety-one million dollars, uh, for local transportation network, which exceeds the, uh, projected revenues when the proposition was passed. And so we're trying to put as much of that money to work as fast as we can for our citizens. All right, Peninsula Clean Energy Report, uh, Ms. Benetti, uh, gave us the report in the, in the public forum. Uh, here, there will be, uh, a workshop, and you can, it's an online workshop, uh, for citizens and customers with rooftop solar systems, and we call that net energy metering customers. They can register for that at PennCleanEnergy.co slash solar, underline workshop. Go to Peninsula Clean Energy and look for that solar workshop. That's going to be Thursday, January twentieth, at six PM. That's Thursday, January twentieth, at six PM, for our solar rooftop customers. All right. And so that's my report on item fourteen, and now we'll close fourteen, move to fifteen, and go to City Councilmember Reports. We'll start with Councilmember Jones.
My report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No reports here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, uh, want to let everybody know that the, uh, Los Banos World Club is having their annual crab feed April first. Tickets are on sale, uh, so that's a good thing. Helps raise a lot of money for a lot of good charitable organizations. Second, uh, I'd like to, uh, kind of dovetail to what the City Manager was talking about, uh, emergency services, fire, and, uh, and police. As we have this sprawl, this suburban sprawl, houses going up, it's, it's, it seems like it's going to create more burden, more stress on our police and fire. And I, I'd like to just bring this, this thought in as, as we have a vacancy here with the assistant fire position, uh, maybe we can look at, uh, maybe hiring more police or firemen instead of, uh, having that assistant fire position. I know that other municipalities with greater, larger, uh, fire departments don't have an assistant fire, uh, chief, and maybe we can, uh, spread load those duties to the captains. That way, they're buying in more to, uh, their organization, being part of that, uh, organization. Again, uh, last year, we had sent out a, a fire crew understaffed because we don't have enough firemen to, to, uh, staff sometimes. So again, as we, as we're planning, as we're growing, maybe we can take a look at, uh, reallocating those monies to, uh, more firefighters. Instead of being talk heavy, uh, let's put some more boots on the ground for them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Um, and then my mayor's report, um, I want to note, we will be sending out a letter that has to do with the water, uh, the city's water quality. The city's water was never a danger to the residents. The well in question was not online. In October twenty twenty-one, the water system collected required samples from well five, while the water was running to waste and not delivered to the customers. These results showed that well five exceeded a nitrate MCL. Well five has not supplied water to customers since September twenty twenty-one, and was only sampled in October, as we are required by regulation to sample the well once every three months. So residents will be receiving written notice on this, uh, the well water and the, the nitrate was a small, small amount over, not acceptable, but once again, it was not delivered to customers, and that is important, I think, for everyone to know. We're always trying to take care of our, of our people. Also in taking care of our people, um, fire, uh, helped distribute, um, a whole lot of COVID nineteen test kits out, uh, for our residents, so they could know they're safe, healthy, or if they had risk, uh, with the COVID nineteen, if they're showing positive, uh, to often protect themselves and the people around them. So we thank everyone involved with, with that, all our partners, uh, the hospital and, uh, and the various health agencies in town, they're working hard to, to protect our citizens from this COVID nineteen. And so we thank you for that. And with that, um, I will, uh, Ms. Melanie, would you like me to do an adjournment now, before we go to closed session?
Yes, please.
Okay. So before we go to closed session, um, in our closed session, we're going to have the public employee performance evaluation titled City Manager pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. And before we go into the closed section, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mayor, I second it. Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Lambert, and a section, a second by Mr. Yamas to adjourn the meeting, uh, regular council meeting, uh, adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM. And we will report out after our closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Do you want to do a roll call, Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Jones?
Hello, everyone. We've come out of our closed session, and we have no reportable action, so meeting officially ended at nine forty-six PM. Thank you for joining us. Good night.